Important decisions that affect Stokes County Schools, students and staff. Give us grace, knowledge and wisdom. Lord be with us. Go with us daily. Watch over all of our students and employees here in the county, Lord. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. First, we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as it stands or any additions or corrections to the agenda?
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Thank you. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Next, on our discussion agenda, Discussion A, Discussion of ESER 1, 2 and 3 Funding.
Board, in your package you have all the materials we've been sharing with you recently, as well as today I sent a budget spreadsheet. So as we discuss items tonight, take things off the list, add things to the list. It will give updated totals so we can kind of keep up with spending, if you will. If you do not have your device with you, Ms. Barker's going to share that on the screen. But I thought it may be prudent tonight to, as we get started, Mr. Sands, if you don't mind coming to the podium and kind of again talking to us about the purpose of ESER's money. And Ms. Moore, feel free to chime in as you would like as well. But let us know again what the purpose of the money is that we'll be discussing this evening.
Okay, the ESER 2, 1, 2 and 3 Funds. The primary purpose of all of these funds is to address a variety of needs that are a result of the COVID closure of our schools and then the potential learning loss during our time that our students were in remote virtual learning. And then as we try to go through the process of regaining that loss, I guess you will, the money is intended also to address those needs. So any and every area that might could be linked to COVID and the effects of COVID is kind of falls under this umbrella.
And also, we put in your packet some updated information that, Mr. Sands, if you'd share regarding the timeline of the money as well.
Yeah, so all federal funds have what's called the tidings amendment. And in a couple of the different memos that came out, we initially, they were saying the money was available through September of '24 and had to be extended by December of '24. And then they mentioned the tidings amendment. Well, when that is mentioned in the way that it was mentioned, that leads us to believe that we had an additional year beyond that timeline. I attended the NCACE conference last week, I believe it was, and one of the presentations clarified that to say that the September 24th encumbrance deadline and the liquidation deadline of December '24 already included that tidings amendment. So for that clarification, that addressed that the need for these funds to be liquidated by December of 2024.
Right. And Ms. Moore, once again, would you tell us the totals of ESER 2 individually, 3 individually, and then combined?
All right, on ESER 2, it's $4,137,617. That's $4,137,617. Your 3 is $9,256,827. $9,256,827. We're a total of $13,394,444.
And just to bring you up, again, reminding you, bringing you up to speed of what we have done up to this point. We met as directors two weeks ago and met here in the boardroom for several hours and put together a draft list. I met with board members individually the next night, Tuesday night, to get your input. We met again on the following, that Wednesday, revised our list based on the feedback that the board gave, presented that to you last week, last Monday at the board meeting. And then on Wednesday, Dr. Taylor and team discussed it with principals and got some more ideas. Then I met on Thursday with regional superintendents and heard some of the things that they were spending and looked at some of those again. And Lynn looked, again, as directors, we met again this morning, and discussed it again. With that, again, as you see on the screen, or if you have a device, the spreadsheet that I sent you today, I have included a lot of things. I did not take a lot away. I did make adjustments based on the four years down to the three years, where that was projects like air purification, ionization. That did not change the total amount, and that did not change the year because that was a one-year project. But if you look at window replacements, I left the subtotal the same, but I reallocated the funds over three years instead of four years to come up, but the total was the same. Where the totals are different are where it include personnel. So like where you see custodians, where we had eight custodians over four years, and I don't remember what that total was then, but now it has dropped to $1,050,000 because we took a year of $760,000 off that because we can't go into that fourth year anymore. So personnel adjustments made a decrease. And then, but the other line items stayed the same. If you scroll down to technology needs, we clarified that today and realized that that number is more than what we originally projected because when we sent that information out, there was confusion as to whether a regular replacement plan versus replacing everything. So to replace everything is about $2,050,000. The smart board replacement is slightly up as well. When we did the, got the counts back of every room, which was 510, 510 rooms, we did get a little bit cheaper price than we were looking at, but we had more rooms than we had anticipated to begin with. Again, that's the danger of those stuff flying at us in that hurry of it's called, cost a revision of numbers. So instead of 1.2 million, that's 1.3 million now. Other items that have come up-
Hold on, a quick question.
Yes, sir.
That's with smart board replacement, 1.3, 510. What are we basing that number off of?
Ms. Barker?
The 510 is 510 smart boards total. So I emailed all the media coordinators and got the numbers straight from the schools on how many's in each school. So that's a total of 510. And then we said $2,500 per board.
But you're-
An interactive board.
Okay.
And we're looking at ClearTouch, we're looking at New Line, we're looking at Smart Board, which is what we currently have. If we could stay with Smart Board since we already have been used to using the software, that would be a bonus. One thing we don't like about Smart, I'll be honest, is they require, after the first year, they require software purchase. You can use the basic software for free, but after the first year, it comes with a board when you buy it, but after that first year, you have to pay that subscription each year.
But we're also looking at other devices.
The New Line is an interactive panel, the ClearTouch is an interactive panel, the Smart, of course.
Are you just talking to the manufacturer or some of the people that actually integrate it to get pricing?
Talking to the manufacturer, and I'm talking to the companies that are the reps. Some of the manufacturers, like I spoke with ClearTouch, they said, "We do not sell directly. You have to go through our reps."
Okay.
So-
Because I know Montgomery County's new high school, for Seif County, Mr. Bryant and I've had discussions, they're subbing it out. I know Strategic Designs is doing a good portion of that, and they're using a $1,500 monitor, 75-inch monitor. But he said to rewire all your classrooms and bring them up to state art, somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000 per classroom.
Wow. But all the companies that I've spoken with said that we could use the current wiring, our current speakers, the whole setup, using-
I've just, I talked to somebody at Strategic Designs just to get a ballpark. That's without looking and seeing what we've got wired and what we're talking about.
Right.
But I was just curious. I just want, as we're going through this, let's don't buy our last year's technology. If we're gonna-
Right.
If we're gonna educate our kids in this century, we need to use stuff that is this century without, with a lower total cost of ownership. If we're having to buy software every time, that's my position. Let's buy something that we don't have to nickel and dime it to death. We've got that with Johnson Controls, and we'd see how well that's working.
What did you say, the cost to update the classroom?
He said he had to rewire everything. I just caught the guy, you know, and he said between $5,000 and $6,000, that's $1,500 per monitor, that's a high-definition camera, that's everything to tie the computer to the monitor itself so that we could stream and also make the junction box to the network server. So all of the education is now logged for either broadcast or thumb drive placement. I mean, we can get somebody, I mean, and we don't have to use these guys. I just, they're in Winston, they're doing for Seif County. Dwayne probably does.
I've talked to a lot of teachers that use them. They use small boards. They love this. When they're up there and they've got the camera focused on their point and everything, whether it's tech classes, virtual and stuff. I mean, I observe a whole lot when I'm working on the AGAC in this classroom. And I don't mind asking questions, you know. I'm trying to figure out ways that might could help benefit us too, when I see something, hey, that works better, the teachers like it better, makes it easy to instruct the kids. And I mean, it's huge.
Right.
This big, big screen and teachers have so much ease.
And the great thing-
They set the camera up back there on, and they stand up around polling or whatever, and they can interact with kids, whether it's virtual or in the classroom. When I first saw it, I thought, I hear all this stuff about virtual, but don't look that hard and want third.
Right.
And then I started asking questions, and she said she was using a small board. She'd be pulling her hair, is exactly what she said.
And the great thing about all these are eliminating these projectors. That is the great thing about all of them, that one included.
Well, the thing I really liked about the monitor is their LED, low-cost consumption. If they're inadvertently left over, left on with, Richie, I mean, you probably know $400 to replace a bulb in a smart board. Okay, well, I mean, you can operate one of these for 20 years for $400 with the price of one bulb. So please just, you know.
Sure.
Let's reach out to people that are doing it, because right now, everybody's got, we're not the only people that have ESER 1, 2 and 3 money.
Yes, sir.
All right, going down the list still, we had the technology technicians. One thing that came up today that we talked about with learning loss, as we discussed this, was would this be an opportunity for a couple of years to eliminate combo classes as a way to work on learning loss? We could use ESER funding to increase our teaching staff so that, right now, we are projecting to have 16 combo classes next year. So if we used 16 teachers, that would reduce class size tremendously in our elementary schools and would allow teachers and classes to focus on one subject. Again, I know that is not a long-term fix, if you will, but for three years, it would eliminate combo classes to try to help us catch up with the learning loss that we had. That is a large-ticket item, about $960,000 a year for three years, which would be about $2.88 million. Mr. Sands also brought up the need for ESL support, that if he was able to have two part-time people to help assist throughout the county, that would be roughly a $60,000 investment a year of about $180,000. One thing that came up from another district in the state was they asked if you could pay a COVID bonus for the people that went through COVID this year. And the DPI rep said, "Yes, I don't see a problem with that." That's an idea. If you looked at around 900 employees, a $2,000 bonus would be 1.8 million. If you looked at a $1,000 bonus, that'd be $900,000. If you looked at, you know, whatever you wanted to look at, if you wanted to look that way. But that's what some district, at least one district, is looking at doing that for the people that have gone through it this past year. And DPI said that would be an approvable expense. The other thing that our principals brought up were increasing guidance counselors so that every elementary school would have one as a way to work on that socioeconomic, emotional health. Three guidance counselors would be roughly $180,000 a year, which would be a little bit over a half a million dollars. As you see, when we added those items together, the total is now up to about $18,420,200, which is well above the $13,394,444 that we will have to spend. So obviously, everything on that list cannot happen, as well as, you know, and I understand from your meeting the other night, y'all wanted input on it, but that is the input that you have from principals, directors. Directors, or is there any other thing that you would like to say that maybe I have glossed over or went over too quickly or forgotten off this list? Or, Mr. Jones, you were involved in that principal meeting. If there's anything that, again, I was not directly in that meeting the entire time last Wednesday, but I've caught up some. But if you feel like I've not voiced the wishes of the principals, I'd be happy to listen. Have you, let you take the mic as well. Also, Mr. Rose did hand out a couple of letters. To be honest, I've not read the letters. I don't know if they're letters of support or letters of bashing the plan. He handed it out right before the meeting. You should have a little stack of those.
Do you have copies?
Okay.
Do you have more copies?
If you'd like to give them copies so that they could see what principal said, again, I've not had a chance to read them, so I don't know, I'm not aware of what it But with that, that is, unless someone has anything to add, we are here to answer questions tonight as directors, but I will turn it back over to the board to see what direction you would like to go in. And again, we are, I've told the directors to one thing, to make sure we speak up if we're heading into an unallowable expense, because we want to keep the district out of trouble. But other than that, we are here to answer any questions that you have as you look to put together this budget.
Board, any questions or comments so far? Mr. Rogers, anything you would like to share, sir?
Well, since we have $5 million, we need to shed. I think the first thing, first, we know that summer school's not going. Does that meet the ESER requirements, the summer school component that's in there?
How is, I don't know. It meets this year's requirement. We don't know what next year will be. We have projected money for the next couple of years based on what this year's requirements are. They may be less in the future, they may be more in the future, but we don't know. We tried to be proactive and plan ahead with that money. There may be no requirements for the next three years, and that may free up a lot of money, or it may be roughly the same requirements. But we know from what we have been given this year, we believe that that money would make us compliant for the next several years with this year's rules.
Okay. Then my initial paths or thoughts. Air, sorry, Mr. Bryant, air purification and ionization and the custodians. We've only had one COVID outbreak in the middle of the whole pandemic. We've had one cluster. So I think our schools are getting pretty clean and our air must be of pretty good quality because it's not being transmitted. So I would, me personally, I put that further on down the list for keep or get rid of. I'd rather see us spend the money trying to recoup the learning loss that our K-12 students have suffered because of this pandemic. I mean, I understand custodians and air purification are important, but to me, that's not as important as Chromebook, technology assistance, and those, and also the Director of Socio-Emotional Health. I'm thinking we maybe, may have to roll that under somebody else and allocate it from that. Technology technicians, I will say, and let me pull this up, I broke my laptop, so it could be. I do have an email where I reached out to Alan Murdock with, for Seif Tech to find out what a two-year degree person would do. He sent me back and has put me in touch with everybody, but the program of story study, and I'll read this real quickly. Coursework includes development of students' ability to create, store, communicate, exchange and use information to solve technical issues related to interactive media, network system, programming and software development. And under the career, these are the people with this two-year degree. Graduates should qualify for employment and entry level for business, educational systems and governmental agencies. We're relying on computer systems to design and manage information. So I bring that to light to say, we have a very good pool with a partner in Seif Tech that could potentially assist us with the help desk, I mean, one of his IT support and service help desk, that would free up her time and allow her to go back to being the manager of information. But yet, we could put 10 people in for three years knowing that, A, they're gonna have a wonderful resume after three years, they're fresh out of school, they're up to date on the latest technologies and they're ready to hit the ground running and hungry, they just need some guidance. Now, as we learned last time, we have, we're spending $200,000 a year-ish with South Data. Perhaps we bring that in-house for the same amount of money and those become the manager of these 10 people that are gonna help us roll out new Chromebooks. All this new technology that's hit, it strengthens our learning curve, for lack of anything else. Mr. Maruck is putting, he's putting it back in somebody else's hands, Justin Suratt, who is a Stokes County resident and is also over this program. So I think we may be able to find some pretty good people. Now, in the meantime, I did get another couple of calls from, they're saying the people, the kids at West Stokes that are about to graduate are doing marvelous things, and half the time, the teachers call them because they're having trouble getting their stuff to work online. So maybe we have some that are in the process about to graduate that can be the earlier entry level. As they're going to Seif Tech, maybe they want to work part-time for us. Part-time, no benefits, it's not a huge outlay, but we still get technical people to help the help desk hours. Just my initial thoughts. I'm all for keeping that line, that line item though, because if we're gonna roll out this many Chromebooks and this many new digital assistants, whether it be monitors, online network servers, all of that good stuff, it's gonna take some manpower to get it done. We can't get it through South Data because Ms. Barker's already said, they're doing what they can, but we can't do it full-time. Maybe Ms. Barker becomes the head of that program. We pull one of the tech-savvy media coordinators and the female at South and Ms. Campbell. I'm sure there's more out there. I just, I know Amanda because we go to church together, to help assist managing this help desk. But then, when a teacher has a problem, they cut, you know, or a student has a problem, they've got a designated person to call that's gonna make this problem go away without an interruption in learning loss. Long statement to say, I mean, those are my hot topics.
And you said you propose how many technology technicians, like full-time?
Eight to 10. If we could, if we could do eight and maybe two part-times or four part-times of recent graduates from Stokes County Schools, while they, and they may be the ones that are going to Seif Tech to finish their degree. So when they're not working, they can work for, when they're not in class, they can have hands-on training. So we're generating the next, but we tell these people coming in, this is a three-year funded program. After three years, we may need a few of you, we may not need any of you. Hopefully, we have gotten all the support we need, and we're so tech-savvy, it's just incredible. But either way, they're gonna have a steady job for three years and the ability to say on their resume, they helped to transition into current technology at Stokes County Schools. So, I mean, should get, 11 is fine. I don't care what the number is. I'm just saying that-
And what are you proposing that we trim off the list?
Director of Socio-Emotional Health, the custodians and air purification. And I'm saying that because, like I said, if we haven't had, had but one cluster in one school, our air must be pretty good. And our, I know our custodians are overworked, but adding eight more that we can only keep three years and take it away, maybe we, maybe we offer a bonus for the COVID portion for them. But I don't think that still, I still don't think that would get us down 5 million. That may cut two and a half. I'll let somebody else be the heavy for the other two and a half.
And the media slash tech, so would it kind of-
I've changed the wording of that from media assistance to tech assistance.
So the media portion would go away completely in the new proposed budget, correct?
Correct. They would just be tech assistance.
Okay.
And then the technology technicians, although it's reflected in, in this budget at one point, $184,004 a year, to me, that supplements what we're paying to South Data. So now that we brought them in-house, same amount of money, now we have 24, or we have business hours access to it, and we're not having to share resources. So that, that's really a half a million dollars in this budget that's coming out of our general or current expense budget. Right, Ms. Moore? So this, if we need to slide it, we could put that back in, in the current budget and out of ESER, if we, if we have to find 5 million.
Dr. Rice, would it be appropriate this time, just to make sure everyone understands, we are supplementing our custodial services with maintenance from time to time, especially for the after-hours disinfecting, the fogging, as we officially call it. So if, if we're able to scale that back when school starts back, that will help. But in a lot of the schools that only have one custodian that works all day long, we are having to supplement them with maintenance staff for various, primarily the disinfecting, but in some other areas from time to time.
Oh, there's no doubt they've done a remarkable job. I'm just, I'm hesitant to add eight more custodial staff.
Well, and as I said the first time we discussed this money, we, there's times in budgets we talk about coming, a cliff coming in the future. This is a cliff we're gonna create. And so when we add personnel, it could be looked at two ways. One, we are meeting a need for three years where we have the money for three years. And then we'll see what we have at the end of those three years. But at the same time, if nothing comes up, then you've, in essence, created a hardship because you've given people relief for three years, and then it goes away. So, and we are all very well aware of that, and that's why we, when we first started looking at this, we tried to look at things we could get that maybe would have a longer shelf life than salaries. But, and that's why there's still a lot of things on the list. But we're aware of that too and agree with you to assert, you know, can it take care of a need for three years? Yes, but it's gonna create some hardship in three years.
I mean, I wouldn't be at first, I know we're looking at one maintenance position, maybe adding a second maintenance position because we're probably gonna have somebody retiring in the next three. Do you have anybody that, without calling names, do you have any positions that you think may come open in the next three years? Maybe we allocate people now, knowing that three years from now, there's another place to put them. So nobody, we don't create a hardship, but we also-
We absorb it.
We can absorb it. We can also supplement the cleaning duties with these newer people. And then when they do retire, resign, move on, they're already fully trained and we're not missing a beat. We're- We're still, we're as good as we are today, if not better. I mean, Richie, Ricky, I think you're out there somewhere.
Ricky's listening in the world, in the cyberspace world.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm not here in cyberspace. I do like that idea, uh, we could do that, because I know within the next three years, I'm, I could, I won't name any names, but I'm gonna have, uh, at least two people retire. Two within the next school year. Richie might wanna add to that as well.
I mean, I'm not for hiring people just to turn them loose, with the exception of the technol, the entry-level technology people, if they know coming in, that we're gonna give them a good resume and a good three-year job. Let's don't sugarcoat it, let's say that you're gonna be here for 30, no, it's three years. If we can make it 30, awesome, great, wonderful, but it's three years right now. And I really like the thoughts of hiring some of our high school students that are graduating to supplement that. Part-time, no benefits.
While they're working on their certification.
While they're working on the certification or their degree. Because if our teachers are already using them now to help.
Troubleshoot, yeah.
What have we got to lose? That's what they're gonna be doing.
So you were suggesting eliminating the air purification, the modifying the eight custodians to possibly two maintenance, and then eliminating the Director of Socio-Economic, I, I keep saying socio-economic, Socio-Emotional Health. Is there, and I guess, just to try to help streamline this a little bit, is there kind of consensus among the board about any of those items or all of those items? And if so, we can take those off, and we're not discussing them anymore, that helps speed along the process. But if there's some of you that want those items on the list, then we need to leave them on for discussion.
I say let's keep the discussion going and then reevaluate at the end what we think can come off.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Bryant, you have some input, sir?
Yeah, I like the idea of the maintenance man, that's for sure. I know we're gonna have some that's gonna retire, just like Mr. Goins said there, and Richie backed him up over there. Anyway, uh, I like the air purification because I know, uh, I've had it in my house for 10, 12 years on a smaller scale, of course. But in the meantime, uh, I hadn't had the flu or anything. I did have the COVID, but it was very light. My wife hadn't had it yet, and she works in a rest home, been all around it with all kind of people, and she hadn't had the flu. Our kids hadn't had the flu, so I know it works. And, uh, I just think about stuff like that, maybe keeping kids in the classroom instead of having another outbreak or could, uh, some of the school systems that had it, doesn't have any clusters or anything either, and they got, you know, 10, 15 times students we've got. So that's something to think about. The tech assistance now, uh, I'm like Mike, I'd rather back off on that a little bit and, uh, do something a little different right there. Uh, I like his idea of the students. And I also like the idea, again, of more maintenance people. The technicians for the technical, uh, I think we need to keep that on there. Uh, I really do, I think that that would help a whole lot uh, with everything that's going on, especially if we get new equipment, trying to learn it and everything, the problems that we could have. There's just several things right here I'm not sure about yet, what I'd wanna cut out, yea or nay. Now, when I look at the, uh, combo classes, for example, I understand we need that. Uh, but how many kids are in these combo classes in each grade, say, to speak?
Basically, you can think 20 kids per each of those 16 classes.
Right, so that'd be like 10 kids and 10 kids. Okay. And then two part-time ESL teachers, I mean, we gotta address our learning loss somewhere. And those two things there, I think we sort of need because we need to, the kids need the support in the classroom. Uh, one thing I've always been big on is teachers' aides. I know we can't afford them, but that helps kids. When you got a kid that's needing a little tutoring, might not need after-school tutoring, but that kid might need, you know, help on this one little sud, part of the subject, a day or two lesson, and then they're good to go. That really helps having somebody that can take them to the side, work with them a little bit better. So I know we need windows in a lot of these schools, like Dr. Rice said, he, he got sprayed, somebody was outside, uh, pressure washing, and he's walking on the other side of the glass and got wet, so you know. And that's really gonna help with our purification, um, well, our, our quality, our indoor air quality, period. Especially when the pollen's up and stuff like that, you're not feeling the school full of pollen, stuff aggravating everybody's allergies. So then we get down to the custodians. I know we need them, I know the guys that were out there working their tails off, you know, getting everything done, and, uh, really appreciate everything they've done. But we're gonna have to make some cuts somewhere, we just gotta figure out how to make it all work. So I'm not sure where we need to go yet, I'd like the input of the rest of the board. That's basically what I've got.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messick.
Okay. Well, I was the one that, um, at first, uh, talked about the air purification system, but, um, you know, that is a lot of money. I don't know if we could ever afford it at another time. We don't use S or money, I just can't see when we could do that. But I'm, you know, I'm willing to give that up if, uh, if that's something that, you know, we have to give up, uh, to have other things. I hate that I'm willing to give up extra custodians, but, um, I'd rather have like a teaching assistant for, an extra teaching assistant for the ESL learners, English learners, uh, ESL learners, the EC, I think needs a teaching assistant. And then, you know, sometimes we forget about the AIG student. And so if we could just have a teaching assistant, one for each of those categories, I feel like that might help with the learning loss. And you say, well, AIG students, they wouldn't have learning loss. But, you know, a lot of times during this, um, pandemic, they've not been able to advance like maybe they could have if that had a lot more attention. So, and that's the same thing with the ESL and the EC students. They need extra help, uh, during this learning loss. And I think if we hired one teaching assistant, uh, for each of those, that, that would be something that could be shared, uh, throughout some of the schools. So I'd rather see that. It seems like that we've had a lot of custodians and they've done a fabulous job cleaning. And I do realize that maintenance men have had to go in and help. But if we got two extra maintenance men, looks like that might, you know, we're not gonna be sanitizing like we are now for a real long time. But, uh, we would need that extra help for sanitizing our schools. Another thing is if we have to cut something, I don't see why we couldn't cut the Director of Socio-Economic He, Emotional Help. Uh, you know, we have all these guidance counselors, and I think they're under the purview of Ms., of, uh, Ms. McGee, and I think she's done a good job of that. But maybe you could shift it around, put it under some other director, if, you know, if that's a, a lot. But I would be willing to scratch that. And I like the idea of calling it tech assistance, and I'm for hiring the 11 because I feel like that if we hired enough that one tech assistant could go to two schools, and maybe one day they'd go three days, one day and two days the next, and then the next week, switch it out. Then when something's broken, then when that tech assistant comes in, you can just say, well now, these are the things that need to be fixed today, and somebody's smartboard's down, and this printer's broken, and, you know, there's just a lot of things other than Chromebooks, you know, to look at. And a lot of times, teachers, uh, they'll be in the middle of teaching and their Chromebook, the kids' Chromebooks, something will happen to one of those, or their smartboard will go out. And, you know, they want that person to come in right then, right then and fix it. And I can't blame them for that, but, you know, sometimes that person that's in charge of fixing that has got classes if they're on, or they're doing something else they're being told to do. So I feel like that, that is really vital to have some help. And if it's just three years or four years, then my goodness, let's take it while we have the money. But let the people know it's just going to be three or four years uh, so that there'll be no hard feelings up front. And I like Mr. Rogers' idea about getting the entry level from Forsyth Tech. People are working on that two-year degree. This gives a lot of nice stuff to put on their resume. And then after those years, they can find a much better, high-paying job, but they'll have experience. I don't know, you know, I was all for the smartboard replacement, but after Mr. Rogers got to talking about the, um, LED and the low cost, uh, to that, and the TV screens, uh, maybe we ought to look into that and see if, uh, that's more preferable uh, with the strategic designs. Maybe it's more preferable than buying new smartboards, but I know that the ones that are there now are probably, you know, old or aging, and that's why they're breaking. So I've never used the smartboard, so I don't know if, uh, they're fabulous to work with, or maybe this new thing that's coming along that Mr. Rogers was talking about, that the teachers seem to like. And Mr. Bryant said that the teachers like that a lot better, and maybe that's the way to go. And I am for the technology, the two technology assistants. And we're not talking about the other, this is just S or one, right? Is this what we're talking about?
Uh, this is all of it, S2 and S3, yes, ma'am.
Oh, it's all of it, okay. Well, then I'm for those window replacements, and I'll tell you, I've certainly been in some of the older schools teaching here in all of my past years. And, um, I don't know that we'd ever have time and capital outlay or money to replace some of those old, old windows in some of these buildings. And if you can stand and pressure wash, uh, windows on one side and the water squirting in on the other side, you know, that has to tell us that we've, we've got to replace them. And because of the money, uh, I think that we do need that. And I might have to come back to something else, but, uh, I mean, look, I think that's about all I wanna say right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Messick. Mr. Robertson?
Well, I think the, uh, I think the administrators have done an excellent job because it's hard, it's hard to take anything off the list. You know, when we look at it, it says, uh, everything on there seems like it's a good idea. So what, you know, that's the hard part. But it is, uh, four, a little over $4 billion over, so we gotta cut somewhere. And as, as Mr. Rose passed out the letters from the principals, just about every letter, I briefly read through them, just about every letter talks about the, uh, the mental health aspect. And, um, and that's something that, you know, sometimes I think we do dismiss that. And even on our focus groups, even on our focus groups, we had, uh, uh, we heard from parents and teachers and everybody. Mr. Rose, uh, was in on those meetings, I think Ms. McGee too, and, uh, we heard that quite a bit, uh, that, um, that those were things that were important. So, um, so I kinda came in with the idea that maybe we could cut some of that, some of that mental health aspect and, uh, the director's job, and we still maybe can cut the director's job and, and, um, maybe make a, uh, maybe make a supervisor position instead of a true director that might would save us a little bit of money there, instead of having a, a whole nother director's job. But I do think that that, you know, just from listening to everybody else, uh, listening to the principals and the parents and the teachers, everybody seems to think that that is a good idea. And, uh, and that may be not something that I would have put at the top of my list, but I'm, I'm beginning to lean more towards that now that I've taken into account what some of the others have said and, and they're frontline with it. You know, they are, uh, uh, right in, and on the frontline with the students and the parents. And, you know, in Stokes County, we've had suicides this year. I know one of my daughter's friends, um, was, uh, so it's, you know, it's, uh, that is, I think, something that we do have to consider. I do like the, uh, smartboard replacement. I think that's a great idea, I do like the monitors, I think probably better than the smartboards. I would like to get more information on that. I think it would be maybe a little bit newer technology. The technology technicians, bringing them in-house, I think is a good idea. The, um, the tech assistants, I like the idea of maybe trying to hire some that's right out of school uh, and get on some experience and getting us a little bit better break on our, on our cost for that. Uh, the Chromebook replacement, I think is a great idea. Like I said, I mean, they're all really good ideas, we're just gonna have to figure out. Maybe the window replacement, uh, I do think window replacement is a good idea. Uh, maybe there's some, uh, maybe there's some schools and some buildings that we want to target sooner than some of the others, maybe a little later. And, and put some of them, uh, down, you know, at the bottom of the list and kind of see how things are going in a couple of years. I think that may be a good idea. How about the, um, teachers to eliminate combo classes? That's something that's new on this list tonight. Now, what can you tell us about that, Dr. Rice?
Well, this morning, when we were talking as directors about the, the needs to repair right now and the academic needs to be repaired after a year and three, two months of COVID, a year and three months of COVID, um, we originally started talking about, we started talking about the board's request for tutoring, and we started talking about that. And again, you run into personnel issues of can you find people that can do it during the hours, that can work with the teachers, that do that effectively? So then we tar, started talking about teacher assistants and saying, well, what if we pushed in more teacher assistants into the classroom to help during the day, not necessarily after-school tutoring when transportation may be an issue, but to reduce class sizes? And then it just kinda hit us, well, what about our combo classes? That would be a way, if you eliminated the combo classes, you could allow teachers to focus on a grade level and reduce class size all at once. We've had combo classes for years in Stokes County, uh, and kids have gotten a good education with them. Again, if you have a average teacher teaching a combo class, you'll get an average education. If you have a great teacher teaching a combo class, you'll get a great education. I think Ms. McGee used to teach some combo classes, and I, I wouldn't have minded one bit for my kid to be in her class in a combo class, uh, you know, that, that shows up. But, you know, it, it looked like an opportunity, so we decided to put that on the list. Again, that is a big-ticket item, but it may have a good bang for it. Again, that is a big-ticket item, but it may have a good bang for its buck for three years to eliminate those combo classes as we look to catch up from the, this COVID learning loss.
But it is something that's only limited to a smaller group of students, right?
It is. It would affect basically sixteen classrooms, uh, that would become thirty-two classrooms. We talked about what if we did eleven and said that, to say that each school would eliminate some to reduce that number. But then how do you say, well, these don't deserve to have a combo class, but now you still have five more that could be combo classes in the district? So again, bringing it to you tonight, we, we decided to just bring all sixteen, but realizing that is a, that's a big ticket, uh, almost three million dollars.
Question, um, would be, you know, statistically or data-wise, does it show that those combo classes struggle more, lost more, or, you know, would benefit greater from getting out of those situations? Um, you know what I'm saying? Or, or would we, or would we be, be better off with more assistance? And you could get two assistants for the cost of one teacher in this budget, you know what I'm saying?
Well, and I, again, I'll turn it over to somebody that's taught one. I've never taught a combo class, uh, but Ms. McGee, your, if you'd go to the mic and tell your thoughts on if you would rather have had a regular, a one-grade level class or assistance in your class to help?
Um, so combo, combination classes are very difficult to teach. Um, you're teaching two grade levels, all content. So it's not like you're, um, um, dividing the content out. Every teacher who's ever taught a combo class, there are some that have, have done really well with it, and there's some that have really struggled with it. And the ones that have really struggled with it, we've worked with the administrator to, to make sure that we put the, put ones in it, teaching the combination classes that are, that are stronger and, um, are able to, because you have to be very organized, you have to be able to, know that what, what can you let go of to make sure that you're instructing and meeting the needs of all the students that are in your classroom? Um, I venture to say that most teachers who have taught a combination class would say, that it's much better to have one grade level when you're teaching all disciplines. At the same time, I don't have any research to quote you, Ms. Knight, that says they, they don't, or they do, do better. Every county around us has combination classes. I mean, it's just the nature of elementary. Um, I get a lot of complaints from parents from this side of the realm, um, with combination classrooms. Is it better to do the TAs and push-in versus the combination classes? I've seen it work both ways, so, and I don't have any, like, research to say this.
I don't know that I've ever seen research on combo classes, one way or the other.
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I mean, I can do some research with combination classrooms.
The ones that we do have, have they showed greater struggles or loss or declining grades? That was my main question.
And the negative thing, that side to that is it's mostly happened in our K-three classrooms where we don't have EOG data.
Gotcha, right, right, right.
To throw that out at you. We try to avoid it at all costs with our third grade, just because of all the Read to Achieve legislation kind of falls down on them.
Right.
At that point, um, so I feel like I'm, like, speaking for all teachers here.
Right.
I would say that they, most would say, I would prefer not to have a combination classroom. A lot of schools have done things where, like, if you teach combo this year, you don't teach it the next year, and they kind of.
But having an assistant in every combo class would definitely be helpful.
Oh, absolutely.
Because, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the more hands in a classroom, the better. Um, and if there are certified teachers that are in there, um, that even makes it a bonus.
Right.
Um, there is research out there about the more, multiple certified teachers you have in a classroom, the greater the result. There's a study out of Finland for that. But, um, to say that, that, because some of our teachers do have, do really well. I'm thinking about some that do it in fourth and fifth grade, and they've had excellent EOG scores. God bless our teachers' hearts because they will do their best at whatever we throw them, at them.
Yes, ma'am.
And they are professionals, and they work very hard. I think we could, we could make anything work. Of course, all of them will appreciate lower class size. And, I mean, that's the realm of things, especially with the learning laws. Um, and they, they, this year I've heard more than ever, which, which the virtual's on top of it, um, how do I meet all these different needs? Because they're not on grade level, and it's hard to say, well, they're making growth, but they're still not on grade level, and we're judged by grade level, um, from the state. So it's, it's a combination of it all. And I know that I just trot it all around that tree, but I don't give a direct answer on that one.
Mr. Rogers may have a question.
Well, it's kind of a question and kind of a statement, like we just talked about doing with maintenance, where we know we're going to have some retirement. I was talking to Ms. Jessup earlier today. We know we're going to have some elementary school teachers that retire over the next few years. So why don't we go ahead and hire certified teachers to assist during the day with either a combination class, designated tutoring, bringing those children that suffered the greatest, the greatest amount of help.
Right.
From, as you said, and I'm not a big fan of Finland, I mean, you know, it's cold over there. But if we have certified teachers, then A, they can learn from the successful teachers that are teaching the combo classes, so if they ever have to, they've got a mentorship. And they're not just cold, thrown cold turkey after six months of student teaching in their classroom, but yet they are a step up. If we hire teacher assistants, in three years, we have to release teacher assistants, where teachers can be absorbed into the classrooms. When we have a vacancy, we can absorb one in without having to furlough one.
So this would be a Stokes County education on-the-job training of sorts? It sounds like it's what you're proposing in a.
If I'm hearing correctly, kind of like a residency, like when you're a doctor.
Very, very much so. And then we can place them at the schools primarily that have the combos. I'm assuming they are the smaller, traditionally the smaller schools.
Traditionally, but looking at numbers today, it was every elementary school but one.
Okay, how many elementary schools are we talking?
Uh, ten.
Okay, and you would put eleven in, right?
Yeah.
Uh, for that, I'd put sixteen.
There was sixteen because.
Sixteen combo classes in ten schools.
Correct, and, um.
So you put ten teachers in there, and you've cut out six or?
Every school had at least two projected combination classrooms. Now, when students actually get there, you know, it, it may wash out a little bit differently, but every one of them, except for one, had one combination class. Melissa's pick up if I'm saying the wrong thing, and then we have one school that wouldn't have any. Projected.
Is there a way to help the schools or whether it be a retired teacher, you know, educator, that still could be hired as a tutor out of the funds to help at some other schools that were not able to do this? Just a thought.
So are you talking about with the S R funds?
Yes.
Okay, so I know that with their Title I funds, many schools are already doing that. We do have some of that set aside for learning loss.
A lot of times I notice we don't see it till later in the year. We need to be on the front side of this, you know, due to the learning.
Yeah, so I, we'd have to look at what that typically costs. I, I don't know, um, for the tutoring, and that would probably be, need to be a different line item. I know we've got one in there that says learning loss, but I think that's for our special needs populations, which could fall under that. And, um, like Dr. Rice was saying, it's difficult after school just because teachers have taught all day long, and if you've ever taught elementary, you are entertaining for six hours. You're entertaining, you're on stage, um, so it's hard for to get the after-school tutoring happening by the certified teachers as well.
But several, several of the elementaries, I know King Elementary, they start.
Yes.
Early in the year.
They just have a larger Title I pot.
They have a larger Title I pot, so maybe we take some of this two-point-eight-eight and, and designated, here's your, here's your tutoring. You know, the teachers to eliminate combo class line item. If we designate, we don't supplement with a hundred percent to teachers, maybe we take a hundred thousand per elementary school, here's your tutor money. You can start it as soon as you start classes.
Tutor and or hire, or the principal decides early on to hire additional.
Don't wait until January to decide, oh, I've got money I've got to spend. Start it upfront, knowing.
Because they'll know best how to.
Yeah.
All right, address the issue in their school, right?
But they also need to work with Ms. Jessup to make sure that, I mean, we're hiring people that's going to be in, in the pathway.
Ms. Jessup, how do you feel that the needs, you know, how that would go? I know there's a, a shortage of.
Yeah, I can tell you, board, that I think you would have a difficult time finding enough certified tutors. The principals have struggled this year, just filling their basic tutoring needs that they do on an annual basis. So to try to find that many tutors, um, it might be a very difficult thing. A lot of your retirees too are not as prone to want to come back.
Right.
But could we not hire a certified teacher in lieu of?
I think you would come closer to probably finding maybe a new graduate coming out of an education program who's, uh, been trained in some of the latest research and things that are effective, uh, in the classroom. I think you would come closer to hiring those entry-level teachers. Um, and then through attrition, right now we're averaging probably with certified classroom teachers about twelve to thirteen over the last three years. Three years ago, it's like nine teachers who left, uh, for retirement. Then last year it about doubled that to eighteen. To this year, it's around twelve, so averaging probably twelve to thirteen. So I think it would take care of itself, flush out with the attrition through retirement. If you went with possibly reducing combination classes that we have and letting these teachers in these buildings have those small group instruction.
Well, I do think that starting early in tutoring, because, um, if you wait till after January to start tutoring because you're trying to build up the, um, child to pass the EOG, it is not nearly as effective as if you start at the beginning of the year. And I worked in a program for nine years, and they always started right as school started. They knew, they knew exactly who the students were when they walked in the door. You know, everybody was assigned, uh, tutors, and it was most effective. And I just feel like that with the S R money, if we could use some of them for tutors, uh, it'd be great if you could have certified teachers. And of course, the program that I was in, it was all certified teachers. But they also paid that person on their certificate, and that made the big difference. And I think that's the difference here in Stokes County, that we never pay them on their certificate. We just pay them a certain, um, amount per hour. And that's why the certified teachers won't come back. And so I feel like that, you know, if you have S R money that you could use these next three years, that'd be a good way. But I do also like what, um, Mr. Rogers has said, that you could, um, get, or, and Ms. Jessup, what they said was to get people that have just graduated and maybe couldn't find the job and would like to come in and, you know, teach. And so that's a good possibility too. But that's why a lot of people here in our county will not come back. Because, have you heard that before, Ms. Jessup? That they won't come back because you're not paid, I mean, that we don't pay them on their certificate?
And Mrs. Messick, you may be familiar with this, having worked, I think, as a part-time reading teacher at one point in Forsyth, but more than likely, if you would make it much more attractive if you could pay at their certificate rating as opposed to right now, it's twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour for these retired folks that come back and tutor?
Well, I did that for nine years, and twenty hours a week is what you worked. You worked four hours a day, and then you had a grade level that you worked with. But I do know a lot of my friends that would not come back because of that. And, uh, another thing I wanted to, this is kind of a sidebar. Um, you know, our county government gave, uh, their employees, uh, because of COVID, they gave them a little bonus. Did you hear about that?
I, I've heard a little bit about it, but I don't know the.
But I mean, you heard they did give them a bonus.
And last year we did as well. It was not a lot, it was three hundred something dollars. There was a little bit that went through, that went through for pre-K and something else, and our board voted to give that to every student, to every teacher, not student. Uh, so we did do a small one last year, but it was very small.
And I believe the state gave the money for pre-K?
They gave it for pre-K, uh, and we, and the board voted to give it to everyone.
Right, well, you had mentioned, uh, out of this money that you could.
And we, and we had the S R money to do that with.
Okay, so where was that on these cheeks? I didn't.
Well, that was out of S R one, and this is S R two and three.
Okay, okay, so that was only out of S R one?
Yes, ma'am.
So is that still a possibility or no? Oh, you said we've already done?
Well, we did that then, but if you wanted to do more now, you could or not? I mean, again, it's, it's on the list right now, but.
Right.
Again, we're five million over, so.
Right, I see that, but.
Can we, as a board, I mean, we've got to eventually start cutting.
Right.
Can we take, eliminate combo classes and learning loss from two-point-eight to two million as a start? If nothing else, uh, after year two, we phase out the, the program, but if we don't start trimming.
Yeah, take it to two million. I mean, potentially we can, and look if we have to shift somewhere else, but that's fine.
I am fine with it, but it's a board meeting, not a superintendent meeting. It's a board meeting, not a superintendent meeting, so you don't need my permission.
Uh, yes, I mean, we would be fine with that. We'd like to hear what he has to say, um, I would just like.
He's shaking his head, you know, how did I get thrown out of the?
Um, look, she did it. She, she did it, okay, not the board. But, um, I would like to say that I agree with what, um, Ms. Messick said. And, um, we need to address how to attract, uh, those, those paying towards the certificates. I think if we can correct that, that could help us, uh, down the road, uh, maybe sooner rather than later. But again, it's hard, like we're saying, we're trying to trim costs, but if there's a way to reduce the number there and, um, I don't know, somehow incorporate the paying towards the certificate to retain these tutors and or, like Mr. Rogers said, with the, the teachers.
Let's say, take it to two million designated.
Split it.
Per student ADM, and let the principal be the principal.
Decide, yeah.
They want to pay it at a higher rate, I encourage them if we get a better product.
Mr. Sands in writing the grant, they are basically saying, and don't freak out over the numbers, for the next three years, six-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and six, a lot of sixes, uh, and sixty-seven.
You can round it off.
Yeah, please.
Six hundred thousand a year for supplemental.
Six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year for supplemental tutoring slash learning loss at principal's discretion. Do you believe that writing something that vagrant to the plan would be accepted by DPI versus more specifics?
Initially, the answer would be yes. I mean, I don't, I think we could word it, uh, with a justification that would allow the flexibility to do one or the other or a combination. As Lynette just pointed out, though, we would, when we go into the budgeting part of it, each one of those would have a different budget code. So we could take a projected amount of that, uh, allocation and designate it in both places, and, and cover it, and then, once we have a determination of what each school would do, then that would probably require a budget amendment to correct the coding part of it. But as far as specifically giving a line item for instructional support, tutoring slash whether it's tutoring or another teacher, I think we could justify that into language.
Okay, that's, that's good to know. Thank you, sir. Mr. Robertson, did, I feel like we've kind of jumped around. Were you able to say everything you wanted to or share?
Yeah, I think so. I was just, we, I think what, uh, we were talking about the, uh, combo classes and, and that's kind of what got us off on the, uh, the whole discussion.
All right. It's your fault. No, go ahead.
But, um, so I guess one other thought on that, and, and we may have already kind of determined this, but if we're looking at sixteen positions, um, if we absorb some of those positions in with the retired, the teachers that are retiring, by the time we get to year three, we may not, we may not need all sixteen of those positions. So, you know, we may, we, we, could we make it heavier on the front end? And, um, and a little lighter on the back end?
With as people retire and they move into a slot, basically.
I'm thinking that, you know, some of the kids may need more help on the front side
Oh, yeah, definitely.
In the, in the first year than they will be maybe in the third year. Maybe by the third year, some of them's called up and, and we don't need so much.
Right.
So if we, if we, if we kept the 16 positions in the first year, and then by the second year, if we've absorbed some of those positions into the, into the regular, you know, maybe that number comes down a little bit, and by the third year, it comes down some more. Maybe spending the same amount of money. I'm just thinking that maybe we can spend a little bit more of it on the front side.
Here's my concern. And I'm, I mean, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. But this whole 2.8 million does not address the student who's behind and not in a combo class. We're only talking about 16 classes of everybody in the, in the system. Where a tutoring or a one-on-one or an extra teacher to work with this student Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 10 till noon to get them back up to speed, because they're not in a combo class. They're in a straight fourth grade class and they're struggling.
Well, if we, I think as the conversation progressed a little bit, instead of maybe doing the combo class, if we, if we take so much of that money and just give it to each school
Right.
Based on the ADM, then the principal can do their job and, and, and spend it as they see fit. Maybe choose to hire a certified teacher as a tutor or whatever. But I still think maybe heavier on the first year and then, and then reduce it a little bit in year two and year three. I ever how that would work.
Just looking at some numbers real quickly, if we did $100 per student, 5,600 students, that'd be $560,000 a year. That would take that budget number down to 1680, 1,680,000. So that would take a million off of that number and still give a sizable amount per year to schools. I mean, you could do $110, you could do $115 to get it back closer to 2 million. But if you just did $100 per student, at 5,600 students, that'd be 560,000 a year or 1.68 million. That might would be
Mr. Jones, would you like the flexibility to, to be able to go hire a certified teacher as your full-time tutor from Walker Halls or?
If you could, would you mind just coming up and speak to us? Thank you.
We're not going to put you on the spot. We're going to put you in front of the mic on the spot.
Again, Ms. McGee asked you to do.
That's fine. I'll, I'll speak for me personally and not representing all the administrators, but I think I do have a pretty good perspective. Every school is different. And when I'm listening to the conversations, whether it's one counselor for every school or whatever, it's no combos, the equitability across for all of our students. And so by that dollar allotment per child would allow that flexibility. Personally, at Popper Springs, we spend, this year, we have set aside a significant amount for tutoring money. I'm going to, it changes daily as sub needs change and some have to go into a different role, but approximately $40,000. But I will tell you that it would not, if you told me I had another teacher, we, I believe our staff and our teachers would take that, just the trickle-down effect, the manpower that that gives.
Right.
However, some schools, you know, may not. I think the important thing is, is address instruction. Nothing, I think it's important to remember, nothing can replace core instruction and good core instruction. We cannot intervene our way out. I'm not saying tutors aren't beneficial. I spend, probably since I was at 100, I spent more than anybody else on tutors. But you take small classrooms or you take that flexibility, whether it's social emotional flexibility, we've done some creative things this year. Every school's needs are different. And so somehow tying it like that, but I do like that dollar amount per child per se, and it's a little more equitable for all students. Like you said, a fourth grade that hasn't faced a combo or is not, you know, maybe AIG, it may be whatever the case may be, it was certainly that trickle-down effect, I think would be powerful. Because every time we have a tutor, it's also a burden for that teacher as well to plan instruction to get the small groups, you know, when are they there, when are they not there? So I think it's all of those things. Any questions?
Thank you. So the proposed dollar amount per student, like Dr. Rice shared, are we comfortable with that? And that would bring that number down from the 1,959 to 1.68?
Yes, that, that's bringing it down from 2.7
Sorry.
Million to 1.68.
Okay.
So that would, that's cut over a million dollars off just by doing that.
Can you just, to keep it simple, back out the summer school? So we, because we know we have to have that. That's a non-cut. I, let me follow what I'm saying. And then we'll know when we get to the 11 million.
So
Or nevermind, just leave it in and when we get to 13,4, we're done.
That, that's what I was thinking. I'm looking at for 13,394,444 in that top box when we get done subtracting.
Now, let me ask this, the technology technicians, the two of them at a half a million dollars are 552. That's already in our current expense budget. If we wanted to put that back in current expense, we don't have to worry about, we still get it, we just don't reflect it.
Correct. If we were to eliminate a contract and add those positions locally, that would be a wash and it would not need to come out of this.
Reason I say that we may not have to, that's a half a million dollars worth.
Yes, if we foresee that staying funded in our current, correct?
Correct.
I mean, we've got to have it either way, whether we pay for it here or South Dade.
So we could potentially remove that, but kind of make
We can remove it, but we, we can take it off, but keep it.
Yeah, keep it in the current. Okay. And
So is that consensus to take that out, line out amount?
I think so.
I think as long as we keep it in the current budget.
As long as we keep it in the current budget.
They remained or transitioned.
Yeah, it's not going away in the
Current.
Right. All right. So now we're down to 1, 16,968.
And my question from hearing everyone's discussion with the tech assistants, the 11, I mean, that job description would be very clear as to what we're looking for and the requirements of knowledge and training and education that would go along with that. And would they also offer or work along with the media teachers at each school? I mean, they would kind of be like, you know, we'll say constant communication, but work almost hand in hand and help them if they're not busy repairing electronics, then they would be helping that person? Is that what you foresee?
Yes.
Okay.
And we, we had budgeted roughly $35,000, $36,000 per position for that. And, and that's what we were anticipating. So possibly, you know, a 28, $30,000 salary and the benefits in that role. So that's what we were thinking along those lines of pay. But, you know,
Well, I guess
But if y'all are looking to say, let's move that to a different number of, or leave it up to say
I think some board members had shared some concerns at that pay rate. Would we attract, right?
Or if you're saying we need to move it up?
Well, I think we leave the number where it's at and then let, it may be eight or 10.
Versus 11?
Versus 11.
Okay. And then disperse that money out into paying each individually more.
I had requested from Forsyth Tech what the starting salary of somebody with that certificate or that degree is. They haven't gotten back to me yet, so I, I can't say.
Okay. So we'll leave that for now. The Chrome book replacement, I mean, are we wanting to do that and replace basically countywide?
Well, as many has been broken. I think we need to replace, I think we need to replace them, don't you, Mrs.?
I don't know that the ones that are working perfectly fine.
Well, what I
You know what I mean? How would you
What we're looking at is in 23, 24.
It would be in increments.
It would be, we would do this in increments only as needed. But that last year, we would make sure that we have new ones. So every Chrome book would be less than two or three years old at that point.
Okay.
That would get us another three or four years down the road with good equipment.
And I know I'm kind of going at the bottom and working my way up, but the director of socio-emotional health, I've kind of heard different things. I mean, is the consensus to maybe keep this or cut it and/or consider maybe take, say, 15,000 or so, or 20,000 from that allotted director monies and put it into like a lead or supervisor, social worker? So we would still get maybe, one of the budgets had two additional social workers in them and hire two additional social workers, but one being a supervisor rather than a director role? Is that possible?
Sure.
As far as, you know, just keeping up with everyone and keeping that accountability there and staying, and I guess report to you, sir.
The hard thing is going to be finding social workers, licensed social workers. When we hired these last two social workers, we had somewhat of a limited pool of applicants.
Okay.
So finding those people, it's going to be the most difficult part of that.
Is it at this pay rate or what is
I would say in general.
Okay.
We do have somebody doing an internship now with us who's graduating, that's going to be fully licensed. So we think that we may have a good, strong lead on one, which is why there's one in the, the budget, thinking that we could possibly land that person. We could certainly look for two. But again, the, the pool was limited the first time when we were trying to hire two.
Can we eliminate the director and make one of the social workers like the supervisor? So you take
That's what I just said. You take the funding from the director and give it to one, a little, pay them a little better to be a kind of overseer of the others. I mean,
Yeah, maybe take it to 80. I don't know.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The initial hope on the director spot was not just to have a supervisory position for our social workers, but we do need support for our guidance counselors, both at the secondary level and at the elementary level, to have someone to coordinate their efforts and help out there as well. And also to support MTSS, which is a pretty major initiative for us.
Right.
That will address intervention, learning loss, and helping us to tier our students and support them to the best of our ability. So that was part of the director's spot. It wasn't just for the social workers in our conversations initially. So I just want to be real upfront about that portion.
Okay.
Mr. Bryant, to your question, Ms. McGee supervises, so, excuse me, guidance counselors at the elementary level. Mr. Rose supervises guidance counselors at the 612 level, and I supervise social workers. And we currently do not have anyone, and this, and Ms. Collins works with all of the other areas, MTSS.
MTSS, psychologists.
Day treatment type programs. So right now, we've got four or five different people operating this entire social emotional wellness area, if you will.
Oh, I think you guys are doing a great job. And I, I'm kind of like that with Mr. Rogers, that if we've got to eliminate some money, then this could go with this point. The director of social economic, emotional health, in my opinion. That's just my opinion.
Well, we're taking that out of the budget. We are now at 16,668,000.
And the social worker, right now, it leaves us with just one additional?
This would be one additional. We have two. This would be a third.
Actually, in full transparency, we have two full-time social workers. We have a third social worker that works with just a select group of students because of the way they're funded.
Okay.
So if we hired this one, we would have four in the district. If we were to get the 29 monies for that specialized position again next year, and that's a grant-funded position that we're not guaranteed to receive.
Yes, sir.
We typically receive that money each year, but it's not a guarantee. The way we have it broken down is we have one social worker that focuses on K5, and we have a second that focuses on 612. And then that person that works with, I apologize, that works with our at-risk population, they work primarily at Piney Grove with some middle school age students and some students at Meta Brook. But basically, we have two social workers that rotate through the entire district. One's K5 and one is 612 with the supplemental services of that specialized position. Yes.
That is meeting our highest need students and not addressing the others. Because there's no way you can work with 2,000 students. In 100, in 176 school days of, you know, that's 15 a day and never seeing them again. So that's not working with a majority of our students. It's just trying to meet the highest needs.
And like we said earlier too, I mean, this is a, this is, this is a need that we've heard from, from, from principals to teachers to parents to everybody that, I think it is something that everybody's concerned about and, and so
Well, just to, I, I am not from that world. I was not a social worker. I was not a counselor. When I got my master's in school administration, I actually could have added on the certification for counseling and chose not to because that's not my mindset necessarily. And I thought it would kind of be disingenuous to even have it on my certificate. When I looked at my first list, that was not on there. But I quickly heard the needs from the others and listened to them. And I also remember back during the fall being alarmed one day in speaking to a principal. And the month of October, they had more students admitted to the hospital for self-harm than they had for COVID that month. And luckily, that trend did not continue throughout the school year at that pace. But at one school, we had eight students admitted, two a week for self-harm. And that was, that was eye-opening to me. And this group reminded me of that, and our administrators reminded me of that, which is why it went on to the list when it was not on my initial list either. Because it's, it's just not where my mind went first. But they quickly reminded me of the need.
I'm sitting here reading some of the principal's letters. One principal said, "Our students are facing more stress than ever, and the social and emotional needs are intense." Now how much more true did that fit? The second principal says, "Personally, I believe the value the district has placed on technology and the social and emotional needs will benefit all students in Spotsavo for years to come." That's just two of our principals.
With this, looking at the budget again, I have added the two maintenance positions that were brought up. With doing that at the bottom, is the board good with me removing the eight custodians? That would be taking a million out of the budget with adding 300, basically swapping 300,000 to maintenance positions for a million for eight custodians.
I'm good.
Good with that? So that will, that will take out
We will just be in a bond regarding
Well, and I Again, we, we can obviously make the case for all 18 million we started with. That's why we did this. What we looked at with the eight custodian positions is there's currently eight schools that do not have two full-time custodians. Those were the ones that had either one or 1.2 or one and a half, but did not have two full-time custodians. And thinking of a COVID world, which hopefully we're getting out of that as more people are getting vaccinated and, you know, for herd immunity or whatever reasons, I don't want to use all the buzzwords with you. But the thought was, if one of those the thought was if one of those custodians was absent, I mean, people get sick, people need to take a day, people, whatever. If they were ever absent, that school is not getting disinfected the, with the plan that we put in place of wiping off doorknobs, the high contact areas, the water fountains, the bathroom. That was the thought process to address the need of eight schools that did not have one full-time person. So that if one person was out, somebody else would be there unless two people were sick, uh, to address those needs. That was the, the reasoning behind that. But again, even with taking those out, we still have to come up with two point two million to cut.
How did we come up with the two point three, two point two eight for windows?
Richie, I'm sorry. I hate to interrupt you. Would you come to the microphone?
We had a contractor come out to all the schools. Actually, he came out to one elementary school. He gave us an average price of each window replacement. Then we went around to all the schools, got the number of windows and just used that as a, an idea for a budget number there.
So if we had to hit the, don't pressure wash while the superintendent's on the other side, number. Can we, is one point five, does that get us close?
I don't know if I can answer that right now. Mr. Goins might be able to.
He's on the couch.
Yes, we're talking about it.
Mr. Goins is texting me saying, can I comment on the maintenance positions? Ricky, you can comment on the maintenance positions as long as you answer the window question as well.
I'll do my best to answer both. Since we're talking about the windows, the, when we did our five-year plan, we put the square footage of the windows and it gave us a number. But when we had a contractor to come out and look at Sandy Ridge, we had a hard number on that one. Now, that was just one contractor. We didn't bid it out. And that cost per square foot was more than what the state had in their five-year plan. Does that answer that question?
Now, here's, here's where I'm going. We're at two point two eight. Yeah, two million, two hundred and eighty thousand for window replacement. We've got two point four million we got to cut. So is there something in the windows that we can? There's the want to haves and gotta haves. What's a fair number for the windows? I know Sandy Ridge is horrible.
What are the gotta haves?
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Bryant.
If you had, if you had one point five million for the windows, could you get it where Dr. Rice could pressure wash and not have to lose a tie?
Well, let's, if we take the smartboard replacement out of the budget, because currently that's in my superintendent's recommended budget for one point two million over the next four years. If we use ESRS money for that, that would free up some money, up to one point two million for the next four years uh, of what we would have been putting in for smartboard replacement. So that could be, that could cut a million dollars off of that number and still have the net same. Now, at the same time, and just very unscientific, unofficial conversations, it could take up to four million dollars to replace all the windows if we were to. But, you know, if you based it on highest needs first and worked your way down, again, there's lots of variables in that and what's it going to cost in three years versus what's it going to cost today, too? But also, you know, there's, there's lots of unknowns in the next three years. So it could be less than that. It could be, you know, again, take one point two million out of that number right now, and it could be a net wash in the next four years, as long as we put window replacements in the capital budget at four hundred thousand dollars a year. That's another way of thinking of that.
Personally, I'd rather see in the ESRS money, the technology upgrades, because that's in the ESRS spelled out. Where window replacement, although it's air quality.
Well, it was actually spelled out in one of the categories, that window replacement was one of the approved expenses. That's why, that's why it got us thinking about it, because it was, it was specifically stated.
Well, I hate to say this out loud, because this is recorded and there's county commissioners that could see it. But it's easier for me to explain to them why we have windows that leak and we need new capital expenditure for windows than to say, hey, these smartboards are out of date. They still work. They just don't work well. I'd rather see technology applied now and, and let's update. When we're getting it, let's get it on a three-year plan instead of four years.
Would you like to take out one point two million off that line item?
Off which line item?
The window replacements, because again, that could be swapped out with the technology in the capital plan next few years.
I mean, that's fine with me. Board, does that make sense? So three hundred thirty-three thousand dollars a year, so it'll be four hundred.
How much are you taking off of the smartboards?
Nothing.
Okay, keeping those.
Yeah, window replacement.
All right, that's what I thought.
Are you leaving seven sixty or?
So keeping smartboard replacement, all right.
He's reduced the window replacement to three thirty-three, three thirty-three.
So what did we decide on air purification?
I was hearing, um, I had heard two, basically two votes against, right?
If you were to take out the air purification, you're basically at your number. That would be at thirteen five, and ours is thirteen, three ninety-four. So we're still a hundred and, now at the bottom.
Yeah, on the, on the next page, is that leaving?
I got a question, Dr. Rice, on the, uh, maintenance positions. Aren't they also in your budget? At least one of them as of now? Why couldn't we just put two of them in your budget, send to the commissioners? Because, uh, according to Richie there, we're going to have, uh, two people retiring the next school year. We're going to have to replace them anyway.
Well, that was one thing I would like to comment on. If we're gonna get rid of all the custodians, and I would like to ask for three positions in this for maintenance, that would be two that's going to retire the next two years, plus in the third year after this is up, funding the extra position that we're currently asking for.
So two in this budget request and one in our current, if I'm understanding him right?
Well, no, three in this Ursa money, take the one out of, take the one out of current uh, and ask for three in this position for the next three years, because we know that they're going to get replaced. Two, at least two people's going to retire.
Okay.
And then.
But we're already over in this. We've still got to make more cuts in this budget.
Well, that's true. That's true. That, that just kind of took me off guard. I was just wondering if, you know, if we're looking at adding and cutting, I just wanted to add that about the maintenance positions.
We basically need to cut a million dollars more out of this budget.
Bonus.
Uh, Mr. Bryant, go ahead, sir.
You know, I don't want to knock our folks out of any bonus, but if we cut the bonus in half, they still get a bonus and we reach our numbers.
From two thousand to a thousand?
We did two thousand to a thousand. Basically, that's going to be nine hundred thousand. We got a, we got a thirteen point four target and we're at thirteen point four.
Say that again, Dr. Taylor. Dr. Taylor.
Yes, ma'am.
Say that again.
Well, I, I was looking, we would, two thousand dollars per person is roughly one point eight. Fifteen hundred per person is one point three five, and Dr. Rice, one thousand, is basically nine hundred thousand dollars, so. Pardon?
No, ma'am. That is a thousand dollar flat rate bonus, and then their benefits would come off of that.
And is that educators or every single employee?
That would be roughly all nine hundred employ-
Bus drivers included.
That'd be everybody across the.
That's just a flat one thousand dollar rate taxed, correct?
Correct.
No retirement, no benefit, just a one-time bonus.
Are we keeping the air purification?
Am I other, are we keeping the three guidance counselor positions or have they phased off?
They're still in this budget.
Okay. Three and a half guidance?
So are we telling them this is a three-year position?
You'd have to.
We would need to, yes.
Again, this was a request from our principals, and they were okay with a three-year commitment that would go away. I don't think anybody's happy that it goes away, but they would rather have three years than not. And that was expressed at the leadership team meeting on Wednesday.
Now, the one at Nancy Reynolds, is after three years, is that person going to go back to part-time or?
Well, right now, this would be replacing a halftime with a halftime, again, if we can find a halftime.
So, so at the end of three years, would that person be going back half-time or? Are they okay with that? Okay.
Ms. Jessup, if you're going to speak, would you go to the mic?
Word of my concern, um, I certainly think our schools, especially elementary, it would be awesome if we could get a full-time counselor. They're certainly needed, but the likelihood of possibly being able to even find a master's degree counselor and then on top of that, in true transparency, letting them know this is just for a three-year possible um, terms of employment, I, I think that's going to make it even more difficult. I just wanted to put that out there for you in terms of just trying to recruit that type of person.
Uh, did we mark off the air purification?
The air purification is still in this second. And maybe that's my mistake, but I didn't hear enough people saying, take that out.
Could that also entail replacing old units or systems at schools? Didn't we mention we have some with older air handlers and, and things like that?
This is not replacing that. This is adding an ionization box into the air handlers that would, that, that handle all of our air currently to ionize that, purify that. This is not replacing HVAC equipment. That is in the capital budget, but not in this budget.
Does this budget allow that, though, replacing of?
It depends on what you're replacing and if it relates to COVID.
It would be a stretch.
We got to re, get real creative. For the ionization, it's seven-year lifespan, Mr. Bryant?
Uh, eight to ten is what Mr. Roberts has found for what in his research.
And what's the, I mean, is it a full eight hundred thousand to replace it in eight to ten years?
They say the average lifespan's eight to ten years. Um, yes, it would be a, another full charge, but eight hundred thousand again is a, a budget number we were given. And we got numbers from two different contractors. They both agreed with eight hundred thousand being a, a safe number. Probably come in under that.
I'm just thinking ten years down the road, if we don't have, have it, we got a cork in the system.
Okay.
Well, ten years is a long time.
I mean, I'm definitely for better air quality, but I'm also, it would have been nice to replace some of our issues with older systems and schools that are not heated and cooled the best that they should be and things like that. And if we could address some of those issues in the name of ionization or purification, I mean, is that doable?
I don't think we're going to find anything at eight hundred thousand that's going to fix any of our systems.
It would be a stretch.
We were four hundred and some thousand just with the chiller at West Texas.
Well, anyway, that's Johnson Controls.
If you did.
Is, they only do the controls, the systems. We can still, have to still pay out of pocket for the systems. Yep.
Basically, they're watching after the thermostat.
That's it, yeah.
Ms. Snyder.
We could spend funds to help.
If you did something like that and upgraded units, you would be looking at picking one school or one project versus impacting multiple schools. And it would be a stretch at that point, even with the way this grant is worded.
I know one school that we could do it, but eight hundred thousand's not going to touch you. That's the problem.
So you don't feel like there's enough money to do all the schools, fellows are saying?
Not replace equipment, no, ma'am.
So back to guidance then.
Well, I guess just mark it off, but I hate to, but I mean.
I mean, we can keep it for ten years and see if something else is better for ten years. I'm concerned about the guidance, because now we're being said, this is three and a half positions, and Ms. Jessup's saying she don't think she can find somebody. So do we keep it funded on the basis that we're going to find the unicorn?
And then there's also concerns over the social worker positions, I'm hearing.
Actually, we have a social worker. If you tried to find two, it would be difficult. But we actually have someone right now doing a, basically like a student teaching experience with us that we believe she would be interested. We've not talked with her officially. But if you start, if you tried to find more than one, a, another social worker would be hard to find. Yes, ma'am.
So leave the one, and that's doable in our budget?
And also, just, you know, in full transparency, you know, where if you brought in the LED screen, uh, based on what Mr. Rogers said, if that's six thousand dollars per classroom, and we were looking at about twenty-five hundred, that number would double to replace everything in that plan if it takes full rewiring at six thousand dollars a classroom.
And that was also the link up to go to the network, to a new server, to everything. And so if our current wiring stuff worked and the current cameras worked, you know, that number could come down.
Right.
But it just, the devil's in the details in that.
Yeah. Maybe something that we'd want to have somebody come and look at and give us a little bit better idea of what it would cost us. Maybe go look at a few schools. See whether they can reuse the wiring and stuff, because if they can, we might could potentially save money.
Right now, we're still at thirteen five?
Can we, can we leave, uh, I mean, I don't know. Are we able to trim off of the purification ionization? I'm not saying take it all the way, but maybe cut it in half? I mean, address.
Can we cut it a hundred thousand dollars, and then if we need to, have a budget, budget resolution to move it around?
Right. If, if some of these others that I'm hearing are just budget numbers, they may be.
Because if, if she can't find a guidance coun-, three and a half guidance counselors, then we're going to have a budget resolution to move six hundred and thirty thousand out.
But, and, and to Mr. Bryant's point, we could research to get more information, but the grant itself is due May the seventh. So we have to have a pretty solid number to move forward with. But as Mr. Rogers mentioned and Dr. Rice, I think, stated at the last, your last meeting, you can do budget amendments and move some money around, but we are getting, we're getting very close to the deadline of, of getting this written and putting together, put together and submitted to even be eligible for the money.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we accept it as noted now for submission as funding grant.
With a budget, budget resolutions.
Number, we can always budget move later.
Line items to be narrowed down later, okay.
If I put in six hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred dollars for air purification ionization, that puts us at thirteen, three ninety-four, four eighty-eight. So we're forty-four dollars over budget, so we can figure out forty-four dollars to take out of something.
I think if we trim a hundred thousand off that air purification, going by the numbers we received from this last contractor, we'll be good.
Leave it out of my office.
Sounds very kind of you. He said, leave it out of his office.
I'll make a ten dollar donation. We don't have duck work anyway, okay? I forgot, we're in a, we're in a hundred-year-old building. We don't have ducks.
If we leave in the bonus.
Right now, we have left in a thousand dollar per person bonus. Right now, going from bottom to top, and just, Karen, if you would walk with me from bottom to top, I don't know why, but I guess just because I'm there, uh, if you'd scroll down to line sixty-six.
Okay, so we have, um, two maintenance positions at 100,000 dollars a year for 300,000. We have three guidance counselors at 210,000, 3.5 guidance counselors. Uh, Doug, with your keyboard, can you change that to 3.5 real easy? Um, and then copy and paste it. That's 210,000 dollars a year for a total of 630. We've got the COVID bonus of 900,000 dollars. We've got ESL teachers, two part-time, one full position, but split with two people.
I have a question.
Sure.
And that's English as a second language.
English as a second language, English language learners, what's our latest acronym? EL? English, English language learners, okay? Uh, that's 600,000 dollars a year for 180,000. That's learning loss at, I'm sorry, 60,000 dollars a year, uh, for three years, 180,000. We've got learning loss, 100 dollars per ADM based on 5,600 students, so that would be 560,000 dollars a year for three years, which would be 1.68 million. We've got technology, that, that was zeroed out because we're looking at that budget number. Smartboard replacement, we have 433,000 dollars a year, uh, and a little change on one year to get it to 1.3 million. Tech assistants, we're looking at 404,556 dollars a year, whether that's eight, nine, 10, 11 people, whatever we end up with on that, 1.2 million, 1.213668. Chromebook replacement, 683,000 dollars a year for 2,49,000. We've cut the director of socio-emotional health. We have a social worker for three years at 62.5, again, with the understanding that's to build a resume, get three years, uh, that otherwise we would not have. We have textbook replacement for a math textbook for 800,000 dollars. We have summer school for the next four years instead of five years. Remember, we lost a year of that, 900,000 the first year, 525,000 the next three years for 2.475 million. Again, this may be a budget adjustment in the future. If for some reason the general assembly says we are not required to do what they're telling us to do this year, not required to pay the bonuses, all of that, this may be a budget amendment that frees up some money in the future. Uh, but right now, we think it's prudent to leave it in there, not knowing what they're going to do. Special populations for learning loss, uh, was 13,000 dollars. Uh, custodians, we zeroed that out. Window replacement, we put it 333,334 and 333 dollars, put that at a million dollars with the idea that 1.2 we would move into capital to make that back to the 2.2 million. And then air quality, we've reduced that to 666,300 dollars for a total budget of 13,394 and 400, 13 million, I don't deal with this kind of number too much, 13,394,488 dollars, and we will figure out somewhere to reduce 40 bucks, 44 dollars.
Now, I've got a question before we finalize that. I know Ricky was saying that he'd like to have three maintenance guys instead of two. Could we back out 50,000 from the air purification and add that third position?
Potentially, the, the only thing that I would say that we may get into there is if we end up short, we do, we plan for emergencies, we sometimes have some overages in capital with just the understanding that if we show up short in that, if we have some savings in capital, that we try to get that because I would want the equity, if we're going to do this, we need to put it in every event, every return. But we don't need to leave a school out, we don't need to leave certain classes out of a school, if we're going to do it, we need to do it with everywhere. And just to reduce money is easy, but if we can't buy the equipment, then we'll have a shortage. So, as projects come in, hopefully under budget in the future, uh, that we look to fix that real quickly. I mean, we can do it for a budget number, but I want to make sure that if we're doing that project, we get it in every air handler. And if we can't find enough guidance counselors, willing to take a three-year deal, we, we may find a maintenance guy with a budget.
Maintenance position instead.
Correct. Every month that somebody is not in a position, that could be a potential budget adjustment, uh, that would save some money.
Um, when you mentioned that about the textbooks, you just said math. Before we said math and science, did you just mean just math?
Well, each adoption's about 800,000, so we only left enough money in for one adoption. If there was enough money for two adoptions, Mr. Rose would look to buy the science ones. That's the second most requested one we have, math is the most requested.
Can you tell me the name of those books? Sorry, go ahead.
And that's just the high school, correct?
No, ma'am, that's K-12, K, that's everybody.
We would do an adoption process and get feedback from the teachers and try to get various vendors to come and give us the materials so that we could look over and do a full adoption across the county.
Okay, so you would have time to review everything yourself as well as hear from the vendor?
We would get feedback from around.
It, it's not just order a book.
Oh, alright, yeah, of course.
It's a, usually a lengthy process to get an adoption.
So, Mr. Rose, each school, uh, all the schools will have the same adoption, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we wouldn't have one school that say, I love this book, and another one, I love this book.
No.
That all be the same.
Get county representation and adopt one resource.
And as the state curriculum tends to change yearly, um, would this book, you know, still be applicable regardless of changes? I mean, you know what I mean, it's not going to outdate quickly or?
Um, I mean, it could, and they could make a curriculum change and, yeah.
So, that's the downside, basically, right? That's the, the downside or the negative to it.
That's why we don't buy a lot of history books, because every year, there's a new year.
That very soon happened to us with the last capacity. We had bought the math book and Tom Porter, and it completely changed the script of the math book.
Mr., and Mr. Bryant, for your question about adding the third maintenance position, could we take some more off the air purification? That would take that down to almost 500,000 dollars because a 50,000 dollar position over three years is 150,000. So, I mean.
But in turn, we could request two in our current?
We could, I mean, this is, would be requesting three out of ESRS.
Yeah.
Which would not, which would mean that would take something off of what were my suggested budget to y'all, uh, that would save y'all's budget, 43, 44,000, whatever we budgeted in for that. Uh, but again, if we adjusted the air purification, that would be down to almost a half a million dollars, uh, 516,000 roughly. And that, that gets, I would assume it gets more difficult to try to get everything done when we were looking at 800,000 dollars to do that, to put that down to 500,000 now. But we could do these two maintenance positions out of here and leave the one in my budget request to yep, for y'all, for the commissioners too, that could be the third one in, in local monies. So, here's a question on the aside. We've got 800,000 for textbook replacements and I'm being told in one ear that it, it could be good for a year, could be good for 10, do we, what is the big driver to replace, to adopt a new math textbook, besides the way we're doing it now, which is apparently an outdated textbook? Mr. Rose?
Well, I mean, yes, our math book is outdated. This would be much more direct, straightforward curriculum. Um, you can look at scores and see that we need assistance within our math programs. This is something that our teachers have been requesting.
Okay.
To have one solid math curriculum. And, you know, with the pushback we had from Common Core, I don't see that change coming again. I feel pretty confident this will be good for a while.
Okay.
And looking at the learning loss we've had, I think that's a great, great investment.
The other thing is parent stress level.
Sending that home to help parents, right?
Because when a parent can read a chapter to understand what a kid was taught so that they can help their kids at night, relieves a lot of stress of when your child comes in with a sheet of problems and you say, and he says, I don't know how to do it, and you look at it and say, I don't either. Um, but if I had a book, I could read the chapter, I could look at it to see the sample problems so that I can try to help my child better with their homework, that's the biggest thing, that's the hidden education benefit of a textbook is when that thing goes home or the workbooks that, the, the, that come with the textbook come home and a parent can see how to do the problem to help their child rather than just say, well, go back tomorrow and just tell them we couldn't do it.
And this is the only one right now that you feel that we need that would help students the most, or is there a second book or a need, you know what I'm saying?
The secondary book would be science.
Right.
Uh, the first would be that social studies and language arts, to be honest, people like to pull their own materials for language arts for a large part, and a textbook is not that much used, uh, other than the novel sets that we get for literature, but we buy the novel sets. It's where, used to you would get a literature book, maybe with an English book that was full of stories. Well, now we have the novel sets, but again, I'll let the curriculum people answer that more directly, but I, I feel good because Mr. Jones was shaking his head yes a lot as I was talking.
So, math books are our greatest area of need. We get, um, requests for that more than any other subject. Uh, since I've been a director, I've not had anyone ask me for a language arts, science or social studies book, even though we do know there's some science needs, especially with fifth grade being tested, um, in science and then eighth. But on the flip side of that, with reading, we have just recently adopted foundations and I, we, we have funded that. Now, we will need workbooks and things like that as we go through the future, but we've put foundations, which is for K-3, the systematic phonics program, and then we've put Haggerty in, which is the phonemic awareness program. So, we've put a lot of money into the last couple of years through grants from, um, our Reach to Achieve funds that we get, um, to get those things in the classrooms. Decodable readers is our next thing. Um, I was able to order some, several sets, um, of that, um, some Reads to Achieve funds and then schools are doing that as well. Math is our greatest need area and, um, hopefully the standards won't change again anytime soon. We just had that adoption two years ago, they re-normed the math standards, so hopefully that will not happen again like it did in 2012, so.
Right.
Just a little, just a little bit of background from the elementary side.
Thank you. So, Board, do we have a consensus or any other concerns on the budget as it stands right now? Are we all comfortable with this, knowing that the line items and the amendments will come later with the fine details?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt this budget as it stands?
I'll make a motion to adopt it.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, that passes.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, I have these discussion items on here for the superintendent budget for current expense and capital outlay, just in case we finish the ESRS funding in about 30 minutes or less and we wanted to look at that tonight. We did not finish in 30 minutes or less.
Okay.
Would you like to start looking at that or would you rather wait until the work session next week?
I'd say we glance at it, I mean.
I'd say we wait till next week.
Wait, wait, okay.
I'm good till next week because right now my kidneys are killing me and these people have been here for 12 hours.
Yes, you're right, they have and we've all had a long day at work, so, that's fine.
We will see, see you next Monday morning at 8:30 and a heavy part of that meeting will be looking at budgets.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, is there a second?
I have a second.
Who, who gets that? Ms. Messick, Ms. Messick seconded. Thank you so much. All those in favor?
I look better in the dark.
Amen. Is the recording stopped?